Good evening and welcome to the September 5, 2018, meeting of the Milton School Committee. As is our tradition, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to defy a United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, so there is, in addition to our agenda, we're adding guests of the superintendent under four, as a four A, and renumbering four A as B and four B as C. And is there anybody here for citizens speak? All right, excellent. So Superintendent, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chairman Donahue. First, I'd like to invite to the table Lori Stillman. Lori, would you come up to the table?
Sure.
So Lori, obviously, has been to this table before, but for the viewing public, Ms. Stillman is our social-emotional guru coordinator, and now it's been two years? Two years? And she has put us on a path and has integrated into all aspects of the Milton Public Schools and has some very, very exciting news to share with the school committee and the viewing public tonight, the first, second public announcement.
Thank you Superintendent Gormly. So, part of the way that I became involved with social-emotional learning was through my work with the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. And, as you know, I'm the Director of that Substance Abuse Coalition, and Superintendent Gormly had originally invited me to discuss when the YRBS first came out in 2014, how to interpret and how to communicate that information. And that was the beginning of a very important relationship, an important way that we learned about what some of the alcohol and drug and substance issues are amongst youth in our town. And it's been a wonderful relationship. Fortunately, the federal government sees social-emotional learning as a very important way of preventing youth substance abuse. And they put out a grant called the Drug-Free Communities Grant. It's been in existence for about 20 years, and there are coalitions all over the country that are funded with it. And we applied for Drug-Free Communities Grant through the Substance Abuse Coalition, and I'm pleased to say that we were just told by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration that we will be getting $125,000 a year for the next five years and up to 10 years if we reapply. So, this, so we haven't even, like, sort of gotten this all in our heads, so I can't say everything that we will be doing with it. But I will say a couple of things. When I wrote the grant and I worked closely with Superintendent Gormly and Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan to talk about how to build this budget, DFC is, is pretty prescriptive about how this money gets spent. One of the things that they want was, wanted was a full-time project coordinator for the town. And I decided to take a chance and actually put in the grant that a .6 full-time equivalent, or three days a week, would be a community engagement coordinator, and a .4, or two-day-a-week staff person, a master's degree-level person, would work at the schools. And so that we would really cover all bases. We would cover the community and the schools in terms of working on this issue. Now, the Drug-Free Communities Grant also requires that we focus on the most pressing two issues, substances, that face a town. And so when we looked at the YRBS and we presented the data, we all know that underage drinking and marijuana use are the, the two biggies, vaping in particular, are the two biggies for our town. So, that's what we need to focus on for the next five years. And in terms of what those positions will be doing, we will definitely be, the schools will help to design the job description, hire the person. One thing that we could talk about is the possibility of combining the two positions and hiring one person who would be part-time at the Health Department and part-time at the schools. There are different ways, there's, there's some flexibility with this. In the first year, there's a lot of funding to help build our infrastructure. Our staff will actually be required to go to a national conference for three weeks, but we'll really learn a lot about best practices. So, I think I'll stop there and see whether you all have any questions, but certainly, a significant amount of the resources are going to be going to the schools. Not only that position, a good chunk of the social-emotional learning facilitators' position is going to be covered by this grant, so that was originally budgeted in, in your budget. We knew that the YRBS would be implemented again this year. That costs money to hire statistician. We put some money in there that was originally going to be used this year. So, and we also put in a bunch of funding to fund the parent education program. So, that's, that's great. So, that's pretty much the great news. I mean, it comes at such an important time because our Coalition Grant ended this month. And so we were really at risk of having to wind down, and here we were told that we are getting up to 10 years' worth of funding. And, you know, many of you who work in nonprofit agencies know that you spend a lot of time chasing after grants. Most grants aren't given for more than two years, three years if you're really lucky. And so you're always chasing after them. But SAMSA really understands that this work takes committed time. You don't see changes tomorrow, but you do see changes within five to 10 years. And that's why they commit to a community for a fairly long time. So I'm really happy about this, and I'm happy that we'll continue working together with, with some resources to do this work.
Anyone? Well, I think we're all, I think we're all flabbergasting.
I know.
That is phenomenal news, and you are delivered in a very understated way. There, there should definitely be the MHS band here and streamers and ticker tape. That, that amount of resources dedicated to, to this, this group of issues is and will be tremendous. I, I find it particularly interesting that you're going to be focusing on underage alcohol use and marijuana abuse, which are, you know, topics that are, given the present opioid crisis, seem to get, you know, second-page status, but are, are critical when, when dealing with our, our population of people here, the, you know, the young students, in particular, middle schoolers and high schoolers, and, and the community at large, and their perceptions of them, and, and the effects that they can have on the community at large. So, I look forward to tremendous work from you in the next few years.
This is amazing news, really. Congratulations to you and to, to all of us, actually. This is just going to be, what a tremendous, tremendous amount of money, resources, that we can put behind the very substantive efforts that the Substance Abuse Coalition has already undertaken. But to have these kinds of resources means that instead of dwindling down as you feared, you're actually going to be able to ramp up efforts, which is really wonderful news.
The other thing Dr. Craig had is that, you know, they, I took some chances and really inserted social-emotional learning into the basis of doing this grant, and they accepted it, which is really great. So it's very consistent with our strategic plan of working on social-emotional learning because it's, that's really primary prevention.
Yeah.
Number out.
I just wanted to double-check. So I know you had said that there'd be the parent education piece. Is that, is that one of the requirements, or just something that you all feel like you definitely want to take some of the money to put that towards? I know that you said there was, because it's such a large grant, there's certain, you know, requirements. Was, is educating the parent community part of it, or you just, you mentioned that that's something you want to continue to do?
So, in year one, we have a few things that we want to accomplish, particularly in the schools if everybody is favorable about it. One is to do what's called a social norms campaign with students to prevent underage drinking. A social norms campaign is an evidence-based campaign that says children have, students have a belief that something is happening a lot more than it actually is, and so they believe they have to do it in order to be part of the, part of what's going on. And so, to show kids that actually the majority of youth do not binge drink is really critical. And so, doing a social norm campaign is going to be one thing. Addressing student mental health is another thing that we'll be working on, and I want to introduce quickly my colleague Deborah Milbauer, because I know, I had invited her to come here very briefly, and we're about, we're about to wrap up, but I wanted, she has a perspective about working with other coalitions and what they can actually do, and I wanted her to bring that perspective quickly to the school committee.
Hi, sorry, I went to the library. Okay. So I'm not sure what you said, so forgive me if I repeat myself. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for allowing us an opportunity to speak, and also thank you for this morning all of you came out. And if you came out to the press conference at the police station, it was really important to have you, some of you there, and it was just great. So thank you so much. Okay. Actually, it's a segue into my remarks. So, I've been working in the world of substance use disorder for, I would say, like, 30 years. It's morphed from different things, but did harm reduction work for many years, and then I ran a coalition in Rox Ridge to make a plane. It was an opioid overdose prevention project when the epidemic was really just starting, and we came up with three pretty amazing overdose prevention projects. And that was really harm reduction focused. And then I transitioned to prevention, and for four years I was working as a technical assistant provider, which is giving support and guidance and advice to substance use prevention coalitions across the state. There was a team of us, about 15, and coalitions in all different various states, and they were, they had been awarded substance use prevention contracts from the State Department of Public Health, and so we were assigned to help walk them through the requirements of the grant. So I've been, which is a planning process, to come up with prevention, evidence-based, data-driven strategies, and much like Milton, walk through an assessment process. So I've been through an assessment-planning process with many municipalities across the state, and not just assessment, but implementation, evaluation, capacity building, so the whole sort of gamut, sustainability, cultural competence. And I did a lot of training on how communities can do planning to pick evidence-based, data-driven prevention projects. And so I think the reason why Lori asked me to speak today is because I've seen the process in other communities, and I've worked with a lot of communities that have DFC grants, drug-free community grants, had and have. And I could tell you firsthand, I actually have the data in hand, that if you look at a chart, if you look at a 10-year trend data, you can see communities that have DFC and communities that have committed prevention dollars and have gone through a community planning process. You can see the trend line of alcohol use going down, marijuana use going down, although that has stabilized because of changes in the law, which has impacted use, and cigarette smoking has gone down, and a lot of the indicators that we use to assess how prevention is doing are going down. And just a couple of quick stats, quick tidbits. So I worked with Danvers for several years, and they do amazing work, and over a seven-year period, so prevention's not fast, I think that's the one thing people forget, right? They'll do, they want to do an event, and then they want that weekend to make a difference. And so we know that the work is long, and you have to take the long view, right? And that YRBS and other survey and assessment tools happen every two years, and so the tracking is slow, but you can see a steady decrease in the communities that have DFC funding and other state funding to do prevention. So, in Danvers, over a seven-year period, and I worked with them while they were doing this, and I went to their coalition meetings, and they decreased alcohol consumption among kids by 12 percent. They decreased cigarette use by 12 percent. And a startling, oh, this is Danvers, a startling statistic, and this is really the one that I want to draw your attention to. In Danvers, they had an issue of high-risk drinking, which is binge drinking, five or more drinks in one sitting, and similar to Milton data where the binge drinking rates are, were very high, double the state average when we did YRBS a few years ago. They also had high, high rates of high-risk drinking. And because of the really interesting, evidence-based, data-driven work they did, they reduced that 25.5 percent in seven years. So, I feel really excited and really confident that the money is going to make a difference because when you have dedicated staff over a, a period of time, it matters. Because you can't just do sort of, you got a chunk of money here, and you need, like, long-term, sustainable, consistent work. And so I am so excited that, that we got it. And I want to just make one more plug, if you will indulge me for one more moment. Having also worked with coalitions across the state, it's not just the coalitions, but it's helping coalitions do community organizing, teaching them how you do capacity building, how you outreach to interested partners, key stakeholders, so not just parents and students, but you include school committee and superintendent and chief of police and the newspaper and the churches. And I've worked in a lot of communities where that organizing has been really hard, and I think I've said this to you before, where you have to sort of convince the superintendent or convince the school committee or convince the selectmen or convince the chief of police. And that really was my role in a lot of communities, to help walk folks through how you manage that, how you can push through with planning, and how you develop relationships over the long term, and I've seen a lot of progress. And I say this all the time, so forgive me if you've heard this, but Milton is really unique, because from the beginning, everyone was really supportive and invested across the board. And I haven't really, I mean, there are some communities where that is comparable, but it's really impressive. And I think that's one of the reasons why so much has happened so quickly here in such a short period of time, which is also, folks outside of our circles who are in this field have also been incredibly impressed with not just the speed, but also the substance, no pun intended, the substance of the work. There's been really incredible, meaningful work done, not just window dressing. So I just want to say, I think that one of the reasons that the Coalition has been so successful so quickly is because across the board, our key stakeholders have been really invested on board since day one. Not just supportive, but investing money and time and resources. And it's just very impressive, because I've worked with communities across the state. I worked with a community that shall not be named who refused to do YRBS. They didn't want to know the numbers. I've worked with communities who knew the, did it, did the surveys, but wouldn't release the information because they didn't want people to know. So I just want to give kudos. So I'm excited for the money because I know it's going to have an effect long-term, not overnight. And I'm also, I just always want to take an opportunity to tell our key stakeholders that it's very unique and amazing and actually matters. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Number Rosemary, did you have something you wanted to add, or is it before you leave?
Yeah, I just wanted to help chime in and just say thank you, and I think our success also goes largely to the two of you being in Milton and, and all that you've brought in, in terms of that community organizing and, and knowledge base that you have brought to this issue. And, and we're very lucky to have you here in, in Milton. And I was at the Milton Cares Press Conference this morning, and that also, that initiative is just heartwarming and, and such a wonderful thing. I don't know if Superintendent Gormly was planning to discuss it.
Why don't you, and then I'll follow up.
But it, it was just such a wonderful community partnership amongst many different organizations in town that are building this system for response to overdoses, that the police department sees, and with a real caring approach to treating substance abuse and substance disorder. And it was really quite inspiring, and I, I'm, again, feel very excited about, about the future of that, and together with your announcement tonight and the work you're doing. It's just great, so thank you.
If I might, Deborah, your remarks were very eloquent and led into, this morning at the press conference, I put out to the principals, our head nurse, Margaret Gibbons, Noel, they gave our PE Health Coordinator, Central Office, one quick memo, if you're able, and to Deborah's point, all of the principals were there, Margaret Gibbons, Noel, supportive, involved, understanding the importance of the work. So when I look at the two of you, I feel like you are us, well, you are us, and the relationship, Deborah so eloquently, and we've never spoken about this, said in such a quick amount of time, the relationship, the work that's done, the integration into every grade level, and it was very poignant today, District Attorney Morrissey was actually, you would have been very moved, school committee, really giving a tutorial to the principals, and they were hanging on his every word, telling us about, as you just did, other communities, how important the work is, and it was invaluable, and I have to tell you this morning, to see all those different stakeholders. You and I didn't talk at that event this morning. No pressure, here's the event, and the support that you have really speaks to this community.
You know, there was one statistic that I was unaware of. I don't know whether you know that there were three deaths in Milton in the past month. Many of them, young, young people, young adults, probably started when they were much younger, and this is, this is affecting Milton, and we really have to take it seriously. So, we're on a good pathway, though. Thank you.
And I think we would be neglect if we didn't recognize our silent partner here today, Chief King, who hosted the event this morning. And so, along with Lori Stillman, that was very, very powerful, and just in people showing up and giving you their support and their commitment, long-term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, very briefly, as I've reported to school committee members, we had an excellent start to school. Yesterday, our kindergarten has started. Last week, our first through 12th graders, our buses are running smoothly, a few little tweaks, thanks to Dr. Pavlicek, and now Rachel Shuey working with Dr. Pavlicek, following up on all of the calls and issues brought forth by any parent. If you go to the front of the website, you'll be able to find the information. Glenn, the email is?
Bus.
At MiltonPS?
Bus@MiltonPS.org.
And we're, had one change of schedule, and again, it's on the front of the website. It was in conflict with the second night of Rosh Hashanah, the instrumental registration night, a very important night in the Milton Public School, where over the parents and guardians, over 600 children sign up for the instrumentals here, Monday through Friday nights, has been moved from September 11th to, moved, oh, it's on September 6th, was it, the 6th? And it's moved to the 11th, or from the 11th to the 6th? From the 11th to the 6th. From the 11th to the 6th. And that's for students in grades four and five, and parents can go to the website for that. Circle on your calendar, Lori Stillman, in response to your question, member Verella, in this grant, Ms. Stillman added funds for our parent series, our monthly parent series that Noel began last year, that we have gone out and fundraised for, so that will enable us, the kickoff is September 13th. Jane Harden, preparing your students for a successful school year, she'll discuss ways to help parents and guardians navigate some of the social and emotional challenges of their children and adolescents face on a daily basis. She'll discuss strategies and provide concrete examples, how they can develop constructive dialogues with their children. So Noel said he promised that, that will be a highlight starting this season. And in conclusion, last year, we talked, and we were brought in front of the school committee and the public, the team of Assistant Super, Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Principal, Ben Kelly, our Technology Director, A.J. Melanson, and Bob Patterson. And a million unbelievable learning experiences will come out of this, bring your own device. We were challenged today to go into any class and just see these laptops being used, but we had a very wonderful donation. Mr. Sullivan came forward from Sullivan Insurance, and he got together with the owner of Pro Pharma, Mr. Resnick.
Mm-hmm.
And they then joined together with the Milton Fruit Center, Walter Tim, Senator Walter Timlty, and Coffee Break, and they have made a donation of backpacks to carry those, lap, bring your own devices, to every Milton High School student.
Really?
Wonderful. Wow.
This is a night of great news all around.
So it was...
Like, all 900, some odd of them?
Oh. Really?
Yep. Freshmen and sophomores were handed out today in advisory period, juniors and seniors.
Wow.
Be distributed next week during advisory.
So, and I left off the Coffee Break Cafe.
No, you said them.
Oh, tell you. And so they're opening a new shop, and he took, they took time out of their busy schedules one more time. The Coffee Break Cafe, Senator Walter Timlty was here today, of course, Mr. Sullivan from Sullivan Insurance, Mr. Resnick from Pro Pharma, and our Food Center was there. And so every student to carry those one-to-one devices, and these gentlemen were just like Lori Stillman and Barbara do, just seamlessly. But I have to tell you one quick story. The gentleman that came from, A.J. Melanson asked each of them to choose a student and say a few words, and so the gentleman from the Milton Food Market, Fruit Center, said, "I didn't know I had to talk to the children." I didn't know I had to give a speech. So, and the silent, if they're watching, if they're hearing. That was, we live in a very, very generous, don, community, but that was a very unique, and I have to tell you, they all give credit to Sullivan Insurance for starting this. I remember educating the Sullivan children 100 years ago at the Glover, and we would be neglect if we didn't recognize tonight Barbara Sullivan and Mr. Sullivan, who really started that dynasty, and the children go to the Milton Public Schools and their support of the Milton Public Schools, and it is in every aspect, as always, donors were. And so I'd encourage parents and guardians new to the Milton Public Schools to check the website, and do not hesitate to call one of our schools or the superintendent's office if you have any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And the annual report was emailed out.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Jim and Donahue. The inner report, I have to recognize Stephanie O'Keefe and Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan, for her editing powers, finished the inner report, and Stephanie O'Keefe, our communication expert, took a different approach this year, and she worked with almost every employee in the Milton Public Schools. She's streamlined the report, and we wanted to have it out to you for you to read. It was, the finishing texts were put on just 20 minutes ago. It's going to be emailed to you tonight, and then at your next committee meeting, we ask during the next two weeks, if you have any edits, don't hesitate, then we'll share them with your fellow members, and we'll ask you to vote it at the next. Dr. Craig had offered a few minutes ago to be the final proofreader on that inner report. We take a lot of pride, and I want to tell you, this annual report goes in... We take a lot of pride, and I want to tell you, this annual report goes in, the town's annual report. We have those issues. And when things come up, what, when did this happen, or 25 years ago? When did that school building project start? We've often accessed the annual reports. So, look for that in your email tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, we have the revised schedule for our meetings for the next year, or thereabouts. And the planned site visits over the next course of those meetings. So, I don't think we need necessarily to take a vote on these. But if anyone has further, it is a living document to an extent. So, if changes need to be made, please inform me. But this is where we'll be and when we'll be for the next several months.
May I ask one thing? Per your direction at the last meeting, I extracted all of the different presentations that we had and thought that you might want a new presentation, or you might want to go back to these former presentations. Member Rose Marlin called in today. This is the edited copy, what months she wanted strategic planning updates. And the, I told member Verella, the feedback was unbelievable from the principals about going out to the schools. They're going to, remember Craig had charged me last night, and I put a memo out to the principals. They're going to present with their site councils to your finance subcommittee. And they are looking forward to hosting the school committee. They understand the time limits and the target presentations. So, we're looking forward to this calendar. And they, AMPEC told me they were looking forward to going out to the schools. So...
Well, good.
All positively received, all the way around.
Wonderful. So, the show must go on. So, that is an excellent point, though, Superintendent. So, this list of activities represents the, sort of, the minimum requirements of our board and our budgeting process. All of the other presentations that we have done for the past year, the athletics presentation in the spring comes to mind, the curriculum presentation in the spring comes to mind, those have all been removed. So, if people would like to revisit presentations that we've had in the last year, that's great. We'll put them in. If people would like additional topics, that's also wonderful. Please forward them to the superintendent and myself. We'll put them in. And we'll put the diversity report, will be in there as part of our policy on diversity. But we will put it in at an appropriate spot with regards to our standardized testing data. So, that we don't pigeonhole ourselves and have to move it several times like we did last year.
And if I might, we're working under the deadlines with Dussie, who has not issued the MCAS results and the different levels. There's still material to come out. So, we're embargoed. So, VIVU wrote to me, "I hope I'm ready by the 17th." So, I don't really think that you probably want that in competition with going out to the high school that night. So, that is, the data is very important in the fall. But we're just working under the embargo dates. And we'll get back to you on that. But I know you don't want to go out to a school and have that against the high school presentation.
So, the asterisk presentations, I'm looking at the various, so there's those. And if there's anything else that we think that we might want to have an update on or a presentation, as always, we just let you know and figure out where to place it, right?
I think we did science curriculum two years ago. Talked about the English curriculum last year. All right? Oh, I'm sorry, member Rosemarlin.
Just looking, this is terrific. And it's just so nice to see our site visits on here. I'm really looking forward to those. And I was just wondering, I hate to impose, but I'm wondering if there might be a possibility of doing a brief tour or something prior to meetings, since we'll be in the buildings. And some buildings, we don't see that often, to see what's going on, if, you know, a half an hour or something.
Great idea.
For those of us who can make it a little bit early. I don't know if that's asking too much, but I just...
No, it's not.
I think it would be an excellent idea. And especially at the elementary students level, it would give us a chance to look at some of those space issues that we're bumping up against, first hand.
And have bulletin boards.
I know. They're always sweet.
Excellent idea. All right. So, with that, we're on to finance subcommittee.
Okay. At our last finance subcommittee meeting, we started out with an enrollment update, just to put us in a great mood. And we are 70 students above where we were at this point last year. We have about seven students who are still in the pipeline, and there will always be more to come. If we were bursting at the seams last year, I don't know what metaphor to use for this year. But it's, we're full. Okay. So, we talked about that for a little bit. We tabled a discussion of the stratified fee proposal for athletics. We also tabled a discussion of a salary increase for some employees of community schools for a later time. At our next, oh, we will be scheduling visits from the site councils, as I think Superintendent Gormly referred to earlier. We will be getting visits from the site councils at our finance meetings so that what the viewing public might see from a site council presentation here might not be as involved as it has been in the past, because they will be coming to finance to talk about the nuts and bolts of what they, the resources that they are asking for for fiscal year '20. So, we'll be doing that. At our next meeting, we will be looking at those two tabled items that I talked about, as well as the fiscal year '20 budget calendar and the capital requests for '20 and beyond. Facilities met yesterday?
Today.
Today. Oh, okay. Facilities met today. So, good. We will have more information at our next meeting for that. So, I would like to make a motion, I'm going to make a double motion, to approve vendor warrant number six dated August 16th, 2018, in the amount of $149,506.94. And vendor warrant number seven dated August 23rd, 2018, in the amount of $131,526.50.
Second. Thank you.
Second, Verella.
All in favor? Opposed? Nobody? So, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Can I have a question? Can I, and this is for finance, but I, I'll say specifically finance, but in general, too. I'd like it that, can you, when you are meeting, I don't know if Superintendent Gormly, like, just have Charlene, if she puts out the agenda. But to put out the agenda and the dates to everyone and what's going to be on the agenda so that if, you know, I wanted to be able to sit in on it. And then also, too, if minutes go out as well, even if we can't be at those meetings. And that's like for everyone, because I do think that's helpful, that, you know, it's nice that, you know, I'm, again, queen of like, we have to spread the wealth of everyone doing whatever. But it's good to just get the minutes. I know we report back as well. But it's just good to get the minutes and good to know when the meetings are at and what's on the agenda, that if we do want to pop in, if it's viable for our schedules. Across the board, if that's okay, that would be great.
Sure. Sounds great.
Excellent. All right. And just as a follow-up for those watching at home, community schools are our before and after school program, correct? And they, at this point, they are self-financed, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, that brings us to facilities.
Well, we just finished our facilities meeting this evening, right before this meeting. And some of the highlights of what we discussed, one was about the RFQ that we've been discussing and that were mentioned, was mentioned here for doing a facilities study. And we've been in touch with Arlen...
Suniga.
Suniga, who is the Chief Procurement Officer for the town. And Bill Ritchie was the first point of contact on this. And Glenn followed up with her on this as well. And apparently, there is an exemption from requirement to do an RFQ for this process, for this work. And that we can just contract directly with an architect's firm to do this study. Glenn, do you want to add any more detail to that?
Under chapter 30B, which is the bid law, there are a variety of exceptions, exemptions to the law, about 40 of them. And one of them happens to apply to architectural work for some consulting purposes. And it was the opinion of the Chief Procurement Officer and others that ours fell under that category. Also, the fact that we've gone out for architectural services several times. And it's been DRA that has done it several times. They would be in a unique position to underbid anyone else, because they already know the whole facility structure here. The combination of those two things led the procurement officer to say that the exemption would in fact apply to us. And so, we can reach out and try to negotiate a consulting agreement with them without going through the RFQ process. So, this would probably save us a couple of months, at least, on the timeline.
So, would this make it more likely that we would be able to get to the January town meeting?
Well, that was the question that we discussed tonight. And we'll do everything we can. But we agreed that we would prefer to do this well than to do it fast. And if it means that we need to push through. And the deadline for a May town meeting is mid-January. So, it's the deadline for getting things in for those, but is quite a bit before the actual meeting.
So, if you gain, you said a couple of months. And that mean, just to, again, to explain it and to explain for the viewing audience, so the facilities advisory committee can just go out to various consultants now and just get estimates on, or the recommendations of the RFQ from... And how many, and how many would you go to usually? Three?
We don't, we don't need to...
The three doesn't apply. We could go out to as many or as few as we want to.
As few, okay. All right. And then, and then, and I just, again, clarify, this would be both short-term and long-term, or just short-term?
Well, that's a good question. And we discussed that also. And I think really, to try to be effective and clear in this period of time that we have, with the amount of money that we have, I think the focus is on short-term solutions for our building enrollment crisis for the next few years. And then, any other recommendations that might come out of that in terms of things that they see, in terms of possibilities for expansion that might have an impact on our steps moving forward, would certainly be taken into consideration. But that's really, our initial focus is how to get through these next three years or so.
Yeah. So, another question, I'm sorry. So, that's good. So, would you say, I mean, ideally, again, and I know you'd said what you said, but I just still, I still like it very nervous hearing Dr. Craig had saying another 70 students, and if we're not full. So, that it would, ideally, do you think it'd be possible that if you could have the short-term situation presented at January town meeting, could you have any kind of long-term update at the May one? Or would that have to go all the way to next fall? I mean, I just, I mean, I, I just, I understand that, you know, we want to do it well. But at the same time, you know, what happens if they, what happens if we get another 100 students? So, where are we going to put them? You know, I'm just, there's this fine line between, we've got, we we need to move faster than I think we have in the past. I don't know. I just feel like we, there's a certain level of, I don't know, there's just a lot of...
There's some urgency there.
There really is. So, if there's anything that can be done, and, you know, there's urgency. And parents want, you know, you saw that. I mean, I personally feel that if we don't have anything by January for the short-term, especially with the forums that we're going to have as well, I think there's going to be, you know, some, the younger, especially the younger parent community is going to be very, I think, undone by that. By not letting them know that we have some, you know, secure recommendations, anyway, just something, and working towards it. But, so, I, I'm glad to hear that that news will help us. But I just feel like we need to deal with the urgency as well.
Right, right. I hear you. And it was interesting that the other thing we discussed at our meeting was the facilities goal for the strategic plan, which, as you know, is the sixth goal that we've been planning to weave into our strategic plan. And we were discussing the objective that addresses this particular issue. And the, some of the items in there are really sort of contingency plans based on what the study finds. And so, some of these answers, we won't know until we have the study. And that's why we're doing the study. So, we're going to move forward as expeditiously as we can. And then we'll move accordingly.
One of the other things that, just, Dad, one of the other things that came up was, so, the purpose of this study really is to sort of prime the pump for that longer-term solution. And we felt like by effectively laying, coming up with an effective short-term solution, we could start to incorporate the groundwork for that long-term solution in a very effective way. Because it's not just the sort of nuts and bolts, what do we need and how do we need it? But there's also the sort of political dynamic of going to town meeting and requesting the money. So, I think that this product will help us, as you say, there's, it's unnerving because there's a sense of urgency, because while we're not sort of at the cusp or the precipice of disaster, we are eating into our lead time. And we need to get moving. But realistically speaking, in terms of long-term solutions, if you need to add square footage, you need to either build in a new location or add on to an existing location. So, you know, even though the options are many, the sort of spectrum of choices are limited.
And the advantage of having this expedited process is that DRA is sort of the, sort of, number one player in this. I mean, they've done four feasibility studies for us already. They built our schools. They know them. They will hit the ground running much more quickly than any other architect that might need to start from scratch. So, that will also help us move more quickly, which is very key.
So, thank you. Just a few quick questions. So, the last time we had our forum, and we had some of the parents here asking us to reinquire about other space. And I don't know where we stand on that. And maybe we can regroup as, like, think about where we want to go with that. Because I'm thinking that even if you have a short-term plan, and one of the short-term plans I know we're looking at is reconfiguring space, right? A top floor, other spaces. That's going to take additional time, in addition to looking at it first and then doing it. That's going to take time as well. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about is, you know, would we ever have to consider moving a grade? have to consider moving a grade or to another location in order to accommodate, like, they do that in other districts, where they move, like, the ninth grader, they move the eighth grader, everyone to someplace else to accommodate spacious use. I know that philosophically, we don't think that that's a great decision, but if we are looking at those types of numbers and increasingly pushing ourselves in, into a harder and tougher spot, that idea of, is there a space we could use? Can we inquire again, or look at those things? Because if we, Chila's right, in the sense that Dr. Tony is right, like, you know, we're going to come up against something sooner or later, and even if we're looking at short-term plans that require building or reconfiguring, that takes additional time. Whereas an already configured space somewhere else would, I don't know where, we, we tried it, and we got nowhere.
But if I can say, I want to echo that.
I don't know.
Because I, I feel, I mean, again, I'm just, but, I, I feel that, so they might, we might have been turned down on the first go-around, but, you know, I'd have struck out, you know, yesterday, but you go back up to the plate. And I feel as though it definitely would be worth it. I also feel as though for us too, you know, again, not ideal, but I still think if we had to put, I don't know, a pre-K, some of the pre-Ks in a rented space in town, it's an, it's an easy fix to, so that we wouldn't increase class size. It would be a cheaper alternative in the real short term if we came up against it. And I, I think it's definitely worth trying to reach out again around town, close by, and, and see if we can work with some of the other area buildings, whether it's, you know, schools, colleges, whatever, and seeing if there's some space that we can use. It's definitely worth it.
Yeah. Sounds, sounds, sounds good, and we'll put it on our next agenda.
Okay.
And any, any connections with any of those facilities that, that you all may have that might help that process? You know, just let me know.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Thank you.
So we talked a little bit about capital planning in preparation for the capital planning.
Improvement.
Improvement committee. And need to have that by the end of September. So we're on the same page as the finance committee, thinking about that. And at our next meeting in three weeks, we will be reviewing drafts of recommendations for maintenance needs for the facilities and also technology needs, which will be our sort of two primary areas for capital expense.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, I think we're meeting the 23rd?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty, okay.
Three weeks from tonight.
Yeah.
We're meeting the 25th.
Ah.
Next, so.
Okay. Well, we'll be in touch as soon as we can.
Yeah, right.
So, and then the, the last item that we talked about was about town-wide coordination, and discussed various possibilities for that and the, what the opportunities are for that, knowing, recognizing that there are many different building projects that are sort of in the pipeline in town, between the fire station, the teen center, the DPW and the schools. And Kevin, Chairman Donahue, has a plan to attend a selectmen's meeting, and maybe you can share.
Sure. So the, with regards to that topic, the, the selectmen and I have been in contact, and they invited me to their meeting next week, a week from tonight. So at that point, pursuant to our conversation, not only last week, but in weeks previous, we'll talk about our, our facilities issues and our prospective paths forward, and we'll also talk about navigating that with, in conjunction with the selectmen and the warrant committee, so that we can be effective in our time management, and whether that sort of ad hoc relationship deserves a degree of formalization in, in subsequent months and years, and what that, what the best course of that would be.
That's great. That's good news. Thank you.
Yeah, there was, there was an interesting suggestion there that, that perhaps this question of, of some type of town-wide building committee be studied by the town government study committee, that they would be able to look at what other communities are doing and, and sort of look at the ins and outs of, of doing something like that.
I, yeah. I, I think that that's, I think that that's great, and I, I, I think that the town government study group is great, but I, I sometimes am worried that, that, again, in the essence of time, I, I get a little bit worried, and, and again, I don't know if there's legal restrictions, but I still don't, I, I still, it's, I feel like it's a very positive thing. I, I think it's great that Chairman Donahue's going to start by being invited by the selectmen, and I'm glad to hear that they invited him. But again, I just feel that sometimes if you have, you wait for another group to say that we do this, it's, time is of the essence for a lot of these groups, and if there's no legal requirement, I don't know why meeting monthly, you know, starting this year, and each group giving updates on what they're doing with regard to their concerns and their space needs, so that we're, we're all on the same page and we're not doubling over on efforts or, you know, prohibiting each one to move forward. You know, we'll see what, we'll see what comes of it, but I just sometimes feel that everything, everything that we do in this town has to go to that town-wide study, and I don't necessarily think that, you know, they're not the, I mean, I think that they're great for certain things, but it just seems as if late that we can't do anything or move the needle forward even a little bit without going to that committee. You know, they're not, they're not the selectmen.
The committee that was started as a temporary committee.
They're not the town administrator, and they're not the school committee. So there's, there's a time and a place to use it, but we don't, they don't, you know, they're not like the mother of the town. I feel like, you know, that's just.
Right, right. Yeah, and, and, you know, and, you know, I think there's, there's a lot to be said for coordinating efforts, and there's also a lot to be said for finding a streamlined approach.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That doesn't add additional layers of red tape and, and the like, that I don't think anybody is interested in. So I think, I think Chairman Donahue is going to speak with the selectmen to get that conversation going, is, is a wonderful step forward.
Right.
Sounds good.
And as I said, I think that, you know, an ad hoc relationship moving forward will, will definitely yield gains, and, you know, we don't necessarily need to formalize that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If, if that seems to be the best way to do things, then we can certainly take that up.
That's true. As long as it doesn't, you know, delay everything another, we don't, we just don't have the time. You know, things like the student youth center is going to be great, but it's not, it's not us with, you know, I don't want 30 kids in a kindergarten class, you know, I don't want to go there if, you know, if we, and we don't, I don't think we should have to if we work diligently with other, other people in the town and ad hoc, you know, people, people know that there's ways that we can prevent that, and I'm just worried about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rosemary. See, old business. I don't believe, I think we've touched on all of our old business. Citizen speak topic response, we don't have any. Next meeting agenda items, well, we have our, quite a full planned meeting, our next meeting, but if anyone has additional requests, please forward them to me, and we can incorporate them.
I just have a question.
Yes.
On our next meeting on the 26th, it says Wilson-Kindle curriculum vote. Is this the vote to approve the school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. Citizen speak, there's nobody here. Wonderful. So I'm going to move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with human personnel, the discussion, which is an open session, maybe detrimental to our bargaining position. This is a will-call vote, and can I have a second?
A second.
Second, Varela, thank you very much. Member White?
Yes.
Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Everhart?
Yes.
Member Varela?
Yes.
Dr. Donahue, yes. We adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.